I'd like to convene the meeting again and apologize to Russell. Apologize to you for taking so long to come back.
Not at all.
Sometimes we just have to let it roll out and flow and not cut off because that doesn't mean you're gonna get two hours too, you know.
Only need an hour and a half.
Thank you. When you're ready, you begin.
Okay. Let's see, my name is Kahu Russell Stewart and born here on the island of Oahu. And during the days of the territory, I live right now, I grew up in the Kuakini, Merites area. And then, right now, I live in Kaneohe. But before I begin, I just wanted to thank all of those who have coordinated today's conference. I believe that is, you know, one of the advantages of having an organization such as OHA in order to provide for coordinating some of these conferences and things. I do want to say that we come from the position of many of the others who have spoken today, in fact, all of them so far, that we believe in the independence nation of, and the Kingdom of Hawaii to be reinstated. We believe that our communications is not with the state of Hawaii, but as a independent nation, we are looking to develop proper communications with the nation of the United States of America and with the government of the United States of America. We feel that it's like if Kentucky, the state of Kentucky was trying to conduct negotiations with Japan and China, that just would not work because they don't have the standing. And, you know, not to criticize or to belittle, but the state of Hawaii and OHA do not have the standing to represent the nation of the United States of America to the nation of Hawaii. We want to commend all of those, by the way, who are in attendance today. I thank those who have already spoken but continue to remain here to hear what the other groups are saying. I believe that's, you know, just as a matter of respect, we should listen to one another. But we want to commend everybody who's in attendance today, as well as all those who have kept the fires of hope alive for all these years since the impairment of our kingdom government began in 1893. Without, I mean, it seems like we've collided and we've been at odds with each other, but we've never been enemies. We've always looked to the good of the Hawaiian people, of the nation. And I believe that nation building is very much like a train, I guess you would say, where there are two tracks. The train is only free and only has its independence when it's confined to those tracks. And the tracks of nation building are built upon proper law and also upon the spirit in which those laws are used. And we were like this at one time, but I believe now that we're coming into alignment. We're coming closer together as groups rather than being further apart. And I think that's a really great thing to be, you know, I'm encouraged just listening to everybody today because we are speaking much the same language, much more so than when we started in 1993. Because of all who have refused to remain in silent objection, we who are here today have the honor of continuing the battle to bring back our Hawaiian kingdom and its government to once again take our place amongst the family of nations. Thirdly, it's our sincere desire that today, we, the representatives of various viewpoints concerning our kingdom and its government, can progress beyond who's right and to begin to agree and unify around what's right. Fourth, for too long, many have been double-minded in regard for the Queen and her kingdom government. First, we spoke in praise and adoration, expelling the greatness and wisdom of Lilio Kalani and her understanding and skill in international law and international relations. Then, with the very next breath, we accuse her of not understanding the processes that are necessary to protect and perpetuate that government. Five, the Queen did not leave her people and her kingdom government defenseless. She didn't leave it to the next generation to figure it out. At the time of the impairment, she set in motion and prepared for the return of the kingdom to its full national form and national character. And I believe that's what we are doing right now, is that we are, it's important that we begin to identify and agree with the national form and national character of the kingdom. We should be respecting her wishes, her legacy, and her wise and knowledgeable provision for her kingdom by accepting and adhering to the process of restarting the government and regaining international recognition through the lawful process of reinstatement spelled out in the Hawaiian Kingdom Constitution for 1887. This is the constitution our Queen swore to uphold. It is the current lawful constitution that remains in effect unchanged over all subjects of the Hawaiian kingdom. As such, we who are claiming citizenship in this kingdom are subject to this kingdom's constitution until it is lawfully amended through its own written processes. Any and all attempts to circumnavigate or disregard these processes should be considered as unconstitutional and unlawful at best and usurpation or treasonous at worst, whether intentionally or unintentionally. As for us, we stand firmly and resolutely with the Queen and her constitution and its processes to see our country restored. So that being said, the purpose of our presentation today is to, first of all, to clarify and establish the proper and lawful understanding of the national form and national character of the Kingdom of Hawaii. Secondly, our mission is to return to the rule of law in all proceedings concerning the reinstatement of the lawful Kingdom of Hawaii and to remove all current impairments and to reestablish a fully functioning constitutional government able to secure and perform all rights and obligations of the nation. The process that we support and defend is found in the 1887 Constitution for the Kingdom of Hawaii as shown, as referenced in the position papers with authorities as compiled by the Interim Provisional Government Council. And I know we're listed up here on the board of the interim provisional government. We don't consider ourselves to be the government. We are interim provisional government council and the responsibility that we believe that we have is to shepherd this reinstatement process for everyone. We are not an organization in terms of, we don't consider ourselves the government. So, does everybody have the position papers that were passed out? Yeah, that's the abbreviated one.
Justine, I believe in your packet, there were two documents that were provided to you. One, from the Kingdom of Hawaii interim provisional government, the reinstatement of the Kingdom of Hawaii, comments to U.S., is it Civil Rights Commission? As well as the Constitution for the Kingdom of Hawaii, Article 41. They should be in your packet.
And previously, over the many years that we have been involved in this and in the various conferences together, we have provided the full documentation with authorities. And you probably have those somewhere. And do we have enough to pass out? We don't yet, the position papers. So anyway, so the, as far as the process goes, the process we support and defend is found in the 1887 Constitution for the Kingdom of Hawaii as shown, referenced in the position papers with authorities compiled by the interim provisional government council. The only participant to this process are to be the lawful Kingdom of Hawaii through its constitutionally chosen representative. And the other participant is the United States of America, not through the state of Hawaii or through an organization, but through its constitutionally authorized representatives, of which the state of Hawaii and OHA are not, having no constitutional standing or authority to represent the national interest of the United States to other nations. As for the areas in which we would like to have OHA's cooperation, one is to provide funding and assist the kingdom efforts to register descendants of the kingdom citizens as defined in the 1887 Constitution and kingdom laws at the time immediately prior to the 1893 impairment. This is to include and to be open to Hawaiian, quote, Hawaiian, American, and European citizen descendants of the Kingdom of Hawaii. So that will be regardless of race. And one of the good things about that is that will protect us also from being overt rejection of recognition by other nations on the ground of race discrimination too.
Tell me, Coach. For Justine, I believe in their packet on page two.
Is what he is referring to, number one, with respect to role registration.
Well, that would also allow OHA to be neutral, you know, and not to be siding with a, in a race issue. So I believe it would protect you for, basically because what we're, you know, what we're asking of you as, you know, as people who have taken an oath of office to uphold the Constitution of the United States, we understand, you know, the position that puts you in. And basically, we're asking you guys to commit treason almost, you know, to support another nation and to, you know, to support what some people would call secession. So, you know, it's a, I can understand, it would be a scary place, you know, for people in your position. But, you know, I'm gonna ask you to be, you know, to be open and not to be afraid of the process.
Actually, what you're saying is actually consistent with the constitution, like Texas is considering seceding from the Union. So, yeah, it provides for dissent, absolutely. So you're right on track, yeah.
So, and we want to, OHA, to help us immediately to develop and implement a system to make available all funds necessary for constitutional nation building, including but not limited to voting, education, advertising, and so on. Thirdly, all public information and programs should only be done under the name and auspices of the Kingdom of Hawaii and no longer under the name of OHA or the state of Hawaii, thereby allowing OHA to be neutral as you desire it to be. Let's see, I'm just going to go through this PowerPoint right now and then just open up for questions. So, what is the Kingdom of Hawaii government? Why does the Kingdom of Hawaii government have a right to reinstate the government? First of all, what is the Law of Nations? We have to understand that to understand the authority that we have to do this. How did the Kingdom of Hawaii and U.S. view the Law of Nations? If you go back to the kingdom laws and the statements of various rulers in the Kingdom of Hawaii, the Law of Nations was viewed as a very important document. Not many people understand what is in the Law of Nations. It specifically refers to the Law of Nations book by Imar de Vitell. So when we talk about the Law of Nations, that is one of the main sources that we look at for the Law of Nations. We have to understand how did the Queen's protest compare with the Law of Nations? What is the significance of the Queen's protest? How did President Cleveland, who was president at that time, respond to the Queen's protest? That has a lot of significance even today. And what is the significance of Cleveland's response? As far as what is the Law of Nations, you have this in your handout. It gives you the definition of the Law of Nations here, the introduction by Imar de Vitell in 1758, the United States and Kingdom of Hawaii references to the Law of Nations, U.S. Constitution, Article 1, Section 8, Clause 10 states that Congress shall have the power to define and punish piracies and felonies committed on the high seas and offenses against the law of nation. The overthrow of the Hawaiian government was an offense against the Law of Nations. And so Congress has the power and they also have the responsibility to punish these offenses against the Law of Nations and to write them. So, the Kingdom of Hawaii Constitution, 1887, Article 29 references also the Law of Nations. The king has the power to make treaties. Treaties involving changes in the tariff or in any law of the kingdom shall be referred for approval to the legislature. The king appoints public ministers who shall be commissioned, accredited, instructed agreeably to the usage and law of nations. In the Queen's protest, you can read right down to there, at the very bottom, it says due to the use of force, let's see, if the reclamation can show that the apparent absence of opposition was due to the use of force against it, no inference can be drawn from its silence and no rights accrue to the usurper. That comes directly out of the Law of Nations or the principle of the natural law by Imar de Vitell, Book 1, Chapter so-and-so, 199. President Cleveland's response was that it was neither a governmental de facto nor de jure by an act of war committed with the participation of a diplomatic representative of the United States and without authority of Congress, the government of a feeble but friendly and confiding people had been overthrown. The law of nation is founded upon reason and justice and the rules of conduct governing individual relations between citizens or subjects of a civilized state are equally applicable as between enlightened nation. So, again, Cleveland himself references the Law of Nations there in his response. So how do we reinstate the Kingdom of Hawaii government? First of all, we apply Kingdom of Hawaii Constitution as amended prior to the overthrow, laws, procedures, and rules. Secondly, the significance of application of the above. If these are not applied, the new government will not have legitimacy. And so this is the importance of doing things according to the rule of law. Otherwise, we have no legitimacy. It doesn't matter how much you do, how hard it was to do it, how many people agree with you. If the law and the constitution is not followed to the letter, there is no legitimacy. And it's like false starting a race. You can run an entire marathon if you false started back to the beginning. It would be no different than the provisional government and all that followed. It would lack lawful connection to an authority of the Kingdom of Hawaii government. To establish a federally recognized, quote, nation within a nation, unquote, would violate the law of nation and the rights and authority of the Kingdom of Hawaii government. Excuse me. What are the specifics of the Kingdom of Hawaii processes that need to be applied? Election process for legislative offices. First of all, qualifications of candidates for office and qualifications of electors of candidate. And that's where the qualification of electors has to do with the enrollment and citizenship of those people who are descendants of citizens of the kingdom, regardless of race. Oh, I see what you're saying. Yeah, in our position papers, we detail all of these things. So this is just a basic outline and a reference to go back to the position papers with authorities that were presented. Any questions that we can answer for you? And I'm gonna refer a lot of the questions when it comes to the law over to Dennis Ragsdale. Okay. Excuse me. What are the specifics of the Kingdom of Hawaii processes? The legislative decisions in reestablishing the nation, updating the constitution. So form of government, monarchy, aristocracy, democracy. Kingdom of Hawaii was a combination of above, all three of the above forms in the 1887 Constitution. The reestablishment of the executive and judicial branches necessary, revision of all articles and sections of constitution, laws, procedures, and rules come after the legislature has been set. I think that's it. So again, I want to just thank everybody, you know, all the groups that have come before and those that will be speaking after. We're doing this together. We're not enemies. We're not even separate groups. We are coming at this from different angles and we are running parallel in many cases. But I believe that, you know, we are building the tracks for this train.
Dennis, are these the two position papers you're talking about? Oh, okay. At this time, Justine, are there any questions or comments from Mr. Ragsdale or Kahu?
I guess the previous group, they've gone through a series of actually walking through the process by conducting an election. Have you folks done any of that, creating a base role list?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear that last part.
In the presentation of Henry Noah, he indicated that they've gone through a basic role list. They've conducted an election and they have in place House of Nobles and House of Representatives that they've actually been conducting a legislative direction. Have you folks, are you folks similarly along the way?
You want to answer that one?
The process he uses is similar, but us, we have to, our main importance is to educate the people that go and hold the offices. Those who are going to govern, you gotta know how to govern. If you're gonna amend the constitution, you gotta understand it. Right now, there's a lot of lack of knowledge in that topic matter.
So maybe as the previe council, you have no formal government infrastructure currently, just as a body to help inform, educate as the next steps in that reinstatement.
My job is to assist in establishing the kingdom according to the law.
Maybe you can explain to them where the previe council originated and why it even exists.
It comes out of Article 41 of the Constitution of the Kingdom of Hawaii.
You have a separate packet of information which addresses that on Article 41.
And that's where our authorities come from.
Justine Lululinsy had a question.
We have a timeline of possibly having delegate selection in September. Is that enough time for you folks to educate the people?
I don't know too many people that even understand this. And a lot of people may have it, but they don't know how to apply it.
What is the title of the document?
Oh, the Law of Nations?
Oh, okay.
This is the Law of Nations. This is how America became America. This is what the Kingdom of Hawaii used to become a member of the family of nations, the first non-European member of the family of nations. Because of the Law of Nations. And we have a lot of documentation to show that it, they mentioned Vitell by name.
Maybe after this, so who enforces, if there are atrocities from nation to nation, who enforces the Law of Nations under international law?
Well, like they said even in Cleveland, it's without court. But if you violate the Law of Nations, you cannot ask other people to help you. But in one chapter, it's called War. And then the next, that's chapter three, and then chapter four is Peace. So that's, when you violate the Law of Nations, you can, other countries can assist you. And there's different ways of, like disputes, there's different methods. I think one guy used arbitration and if you look in Law of Nations, it's fourth down the line. So what happened to one, two, and three?
What we, what we are wanting to do is to include all of the people of Hawaii and to educate as many people as possible in the most general terms as to what is this process and who can participate in it. Because, you know, up to this point, very few people understand that they can participate in it. Many people, the majority, have been, fear has been put into them for various things. That if you separate from the United States, you know, they're gonna, you're gonna be open, you know, to another nation taking you over. You're not gonna have any money. We're gonna, you know, we're gonna lose all our benefits. You know, there's a lot of fear factors involved which are, you know, are untrue. But I believe we need to educate people out of that fear and into the understanding that they can participate in the process and not only participate, but that they can be viable citizens. Right now, the majority of people don't even know that. And so you are working with only a handful of people that are gonna, you know, and it's easier to do that. You know, it's easier to work with a few people and get them on your side and then, you know, and push forward and, you know, have what appears to be movement. But again, you know, if it's a false started movement, then you're gonna have to go back to the beginning. And we want to start at the beginning. And we want to include as many people as want to be included. But in order to do that, we have to, to let them know that the process is available and that they can participate. So that's where we need the advertising. That's where we need the public communication so that, you know, we should be having this meeting at the Blaisdell or at the stadium, not in a room with people who, you know, pretty much understand a lot of this kind of stuff. We need to touch the people who don't understand. And then those who want to be part of the government itself, they need to be educated beyond what the public is educated as far as the laws and the correct way of doing things. Otherwise, we'll just trade one defective government system for another. And that we don't want to do.
Justine Stender?
Are you saying in your paper that the reinstatement of the Constitution of 1852?
Eighty-seven. Eighteen eighty-seven.
Eighteen eighty-seven. And all those at that point who were citizens of the Kingdom of Hawaii would be citizens today?
Right, descendants of those people would be.
Right, descendants of those people would be, have continued citizenship. The Constitution allowed for Hawaiians, American and European, people of American and European descent as well.
Wouldn't that in effect separate you from the United States? I'm thinking more of, you know, you talked a little bit about people losing their benefits, you know, Medicaid, Medicare, whatever.
Social Security.
If you find this new, this reinstated government, which was never connected to the United States, means that you separated them. What would be the implications from the United States on separating these citizens from that relationship?
Yeah, they would have to, by necessity, people would have to make a choice. And yeah, there are some benefits of being a United States citizen that would have to be given up by someone who belongs to another nation.
And Social Security and all that, that's an independent agreement.
Yeah, private contract.
Because you have people that, from the Philippines that fought for America and stuff, they collect Social Security and they're not Americans. So it all depends on how they got into that contract.
Justine Appul?
So the thing that, the biggest challenge in my head for me is trying to figure out the apparent impasse on how do we establish an electorate? Move into some sort of election that would then take up the question of turn left, turn right, go up, go down, shut it down. And except for Henry, that model, where they have a model where they've had elections and the proposition is that they already have the basis of a nation and they need help to grow. The other models, I mean, how would you, if you use the 1887 descendancy, is that your proposal that we would look at 1887 and if you can somehow certify yourself as a descendant prior to that, that that would then be the basis of an electorate?
Starting point.
As a starting point to move toward a governance Aha. Right, yes. Thank you.
What about the issue of settlement of ceded lands that we're hoping that we would get the million plus acres under the current process we're in to be transferred to the nation? And what about the Department of, I'm looking at all the land base, whether it's Hawaiian Homes management over that or receiving Hawaiian Homes as a means to.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think so, David.
If you want a good answer on that, first of all, you can't cede what you didn't own. So the ceded lands is a oxymoron term because the Republic did not own the lands. So you reinstate the kingdom, it all go back to the kingdom and they have to deal with it and issue it out. Do you want to start all over and start issuing patents? It's up to the kingdom what they want to do because it belongs to the kingdom and those who are part of it.
What about Hawaiian Homes since it was a federally established act?
Up to the kingdom, they need that. Because they, the kingdom also had its own homestead acts.
But you have already 200,000 acres already set aside and you have those with the blood quantum already living on the land statewide.
Under new management. This whole government is as simple as that, just going to be under new management. It's changing the sign from state of Hawaii to Kingdom of Hawaii. That's how simple it is. It's like a non-hostile corporate takeover.
And everything is renegotiated under the new Hawaiian Kingdom government.
Biggest shock is the money system. You're going back to the gold standard. That's the hardest one for people going to understand.
So the process, I think it's very simple that the interim provisional government council would coordinate an election to, and from the role, we have to collect, like Oha has collected, but you know, from the kingdom perspective, we have to collect the names and, you know, and verify those people who are qualified to be electors. And then from there, we elect one of the houses of the government, then as a temporary House of Representative, they would call for another election to elect the House of Nobles. The House of Nobles would then be set because it's elected by the people. And then from there, you just progress until the government is reset with the participation of everyone.
Justine Appul?
And then at the end, once the government is reset, then the Constitution can be called Constitutional Convention and then the Constitution can be amended by a lawful government. Right now, the Constitution cannot be changed or amended because there's no one with authority to do that. And so you have to establish the lawful government first and then the House of Nobles, the House of Representatives together can call for a Constitutional Convention. The Constitutional Convention would then be able to bring that Constitution a hundred and some years up to date. So in the beginning, the first election, according to the Constitution of 1887, only men would be allowed to vote. And so we've got to be okay with that. And, you know, and once that happens, then the, you know, when the full legislature is set, the Constitution is brought up to date, you know, then it can be changed to allow women to vote. Then you have another election including the women and, you know, it's not a, it's a separate process, but it's not going to, it's not a one-step process either.
Justine Standar followed by Justine Appul?
I guess I'm having more difficulty in trying to develop a rationale for those who would become members of this new kingdom, okay? If you are already a citizen of the United States, like most of the people in Hawaii are, and they're not Hawaiians, we had difficulty just trying to identify those Hawaiians that want to belong to a governance system that would look after them, the Hawaiians, made up only Hawaiians. When would you find, why would the other citizens want to become a member of this kingdom which has no assets? You know, why would they do it?
First of all, the kingdom has assets. It's just in the wrong hands right now. So the assets have to be, when the people understand that all of these assets, all the land, all the ocean asset, fishing rights, or the ability to do international banking, lease of lands to the military, back rent from the military, all of these things, Hawaii is not a poor nation. It never was. We are going back to a nation who was not 17 trillion dollars in debt. We're going back to a nation who is debt-free. So, you know, yeah, it's going to be hard work. Yeah, there's going to be sacrifices that need to be made. People might even have to worry instead of, you know, getting all that welfare, you know. So yeah, that's one of the chains that has to be broken, I believe. Break those chains through proper education and letting them know what actually is there, not being afraid of what's not there.
Justine Appul?
I'm fascinated by the position of your organization, commitment to information. Early on spoke through, really important that the electorate be informed. So, and I don't think there's any disagreement that, especially if you're going to talk about democracy, nothing worse than an uninformed electorate. The culianna of informing and educating, I think we all understand the need for that in speaking to whoever that elective is going to be, case I guess we're talking Hawaiians, right? Do you feel any responsibility to also inform the non-Hawaiian, particularly those who are forced fifth generation, only home is in Hawaii? And the fear that they have of this talk of nationhood? What is their responsibility to also talk to them about what we're talking about?
Well, I think nobody has to be afraid of. Secondly, you know, there are, Henry brought it out, that, you know, citizenship was not limited to just those who are Hawaiian, but, you know, there were three different forms of, or ways to become, participate in the government processes. All of those things have to be explained and understood so that, you know, of course, people who don't want to be, they will not be forced to be, those who are descendants of citizens. If they don't want to be a citizen, they're not going to be required to continue to be a citizen of the United States. I was born, I got a Social Security number that I never applied for. I'm considered a citizen of the corporate United States, I guess. I didn't have a choice in that, but I do have a choice whether to become a citizen of the Kingdom of Hawaii and to eventually renounce that citizenship in the United States, you know, rather than try to, you know, take from both sides of the table.
But what kind of information would they have, especially the non-Hawaiian, on how to make that choice? Because it would occur to me that I think all the nationhood models that I'm aware of require huge transfers of wealth, reconfiguring the state economy, displacing people, the non-Hawaiian, et cetera. And so you don't think this might be a problem with that 75% of the population out there who kind of happy about being part of the West?
If you establish the kingdom, then they're going to have to abide by the treaty obligations. And say with the United States, the treaty with the United States of 1849, 1850, you could travel to America as Hawaiian and Americans can come here. We know at that time, no passports and all that. But when you're in America, you're under American laws, when you're Hawaiian, you're under American laws.
I understand the impact. My question is, do you feel an obligation to educate them that that is the reality of the choice that they will have to make?
Well, I guess we have an education plan and it's mostly a higher knowledge for those who want to govern. And our class, you can govern anywhere in the world because it applies to anybody. So governments operate throughout the world, especially with the Law of Nations, when you get into the obligations and agreements, that's the kind of stuff. But within, like the citizenship, which was brought up earlier, when Hawaiians were what they called forced expatriated, they were forced to change their country. They weren't asked, they were forced. So they're just going to have the chance to repatriate.
Yeah, but those are not, the people I'm talking about is grandchildren of Hawaiians who are perfectly happy doing what they do now.
That's their choice, you know, as they're not allowed to choose, right? They can choose whichever one they want to part, because as I thought, you can go to any country.
And again, I'm not making a judgment call as to whether it's a good, it's the responsibility to educate and to inform not just the electorate, but the non-electorate, the kind of the left-outs, and whether we have a responsibility to worry about their welfare and their.
Teach them their options.
Yeah, and I think that's the key, that you give people option, if not had options in the past. And so, you know, when you give them options, they can choose.
Well, currently under the government, women won't be allowed, they can't even vote and they therefore won't be able to get elected to serve in any capacity.
Well, you know, women were treated very well in the Kingdom. And I think our queen was a woman. And so, you know, there's no problem with women being in power. That's not the, you know, it's not a women's lib kind of thing. It's not something that, you know, we made up because we don't want women to vote. It was just, that's the way it was done at that time, at the time of the, you know, of the crime, we've got to go back to that time and then right the wrong in the correct way and then bring the whole government up, you know, a hundred and some years to be current with today. And, you know, at that time, we can bring all of those things up. But we have to do it according, we can't make changes because nobody has authority yet to make changes in that existing Constitution. So we have to abide by the Constitution as it is for now. We don't have a choice in that.
I know you would have disagreement from.
Major.
Any women. I'm not sure how that would be handled, but.
Chair. Yes, Justine.
Wasn't that after Queen Ka'ahu Manu? The Constitution came about? I can't imagine Queen Ka'ahu Manu would not let the women vote.
Well, she may have wanted to, but we don't know that. You know, and that's just the way things were done. You know, they're, I don't know, maybe the men were more honest back then, you know, they were more trusted. I don't know. But we want, I mean, I don't know anybody who doesn't want women to vote.
It's like in America, the women couldn't vote until 1920.
Yeah, that's.
Because like I said, we're in the 1800s at this time, so it's a norm.
Yeah. So we're actually operating back in the 1800s, you know, I feel we can bring the Kingdom up to.
We can see, we shall overcome someday. We shall overcome someday. Hey, anything else, trustees? Thank you so much for your, again, candidness and your mana'o and your information.
Thank you.
Mahalo.
Ma'ano, we need to order one of those books for our library.
Law of Nations.
Law of Nations.
I have a book.
You have that book? Oh, wow. I've just been informed that we have bento's outside for those that want to eat lunch. Now you can go and help yourself.
Want to continue?
Yes, we have one more presenter. We have a letter being distributed by Leah from Dante Carpenter.
Oh, I think, I do, I am right.
Ahava'i o iwi pukalai, Nui will be now presenting.
Anoi me ke aloha in ahulu manu li ke haui. Aloha. I am here speaking on behalf of the Aha Hawaii o iwi, or also known as the Native Hawaiian Convention. I take a curious position in that as I speak on behalf of the Native Hawaiian Convention as a chairperson of that convention, I am also very much committed to a particular position on the question of Hawaiian self-determination and that is undoubtedly for independence. I'd like to just cover some of my earlier history, not with regards to the Aha Hawaii o iwi, just to give you some context of where I come from and basis of my person. And then I will move more into the Aha Hawaii o iwi, which addresses more process and the dignity of a process to reach a decision of how we proceed in this process of self-determination. I sit at this board with some memory because on the Board of Trustees, when I was a member, there was only two faces, which now has become indistinguishable by age. which now has become indistinguishable by age in this room, and that is myself and the guy over there, Walter Riddy. Walter lost his position because I think they, to be more pedestrian about it, screwed him out of his position when they didn't give him a chance to appeal an arrest, which he eventually won. They stole it from you, Walter. I almost lost a position when I refused to take the oath of office to defend and support the United States Constitution at the state legislature. And at that time, there was a lot of contention about the whole question of what is this Hawaiian sovereignty? And who are these folks who are using that oftentimes as an excuse to avoid penalty? I represented one of the first, as far as I'm concerned, the first defendant in the case in 1977, Wilford Kalau Alapulava, who was charged with double murder and double kidnapping. And in that case, what we said was, we refuse to dignify the court by even answering to his charges. We ask, who are you foreigners to come into our lands to charge our Hawaiian citizens by your foreign laws? We are not Americans, we are Hawaiians. And so we use the courts to begin the education process of a citizenry that was essentially ignorant of the fact that we were an overthrow nation illegally and that we should have certain very specific rights. And from there, we use a court system. Whether it was my own challenge to have my license taken away from me because I refused to say that I was a US citizen practicing in the federal courts, or it was at, where was that, Santa Island, and people were getting kicked out of there, or whether it was at Makua or Waimeunalo. And so what we did was kept hitting the courts with the history of Hawaii. And over a period of time, I became convinced that you cannot keep hitting your head against a blank wall, you only hurt yourself. You cannot have a thief sitting judgment of itself, and that's essentially what we had. At that time, I was a member of the Board of Trustees for the Office of Hawaiian Affairs, and the office at least was willing, or the trustees was at least willing to give some liberality to the trustees. So I was able, because I kept saying, we needed to find an international forum. We keep going back to the American forum, we're not going to get our justice there. I participated along with my cousin, who was also trustee, Rodney Kelly Mahiai Burgess III. And along with one of the staff members, Francisco Uhane. We traveled to Australia, and there we were invited to join the World Council of Indigenous Peoples, the Pacific Area section. Subsequently, we traveled to Panama, and we were invited to join the main body, and I was elected vice president of the World Council of Indigenous Peoples. I spent most of, a lot of years at the United Nations as its political representative. At that time, much of my work was in indigenous peoples' rights, but to the extent that I had the opportunity to talk about decolonization. And of course, every once in a while, it comes up. And so I was able to express the history of Hawaii and did so up to 1990. And in 1993, I was invited to address the General Assembly of the United Nations, where I also talked about not only indigenous peoples, but the fact that Hawaii has been, and continues to be occupied and colonized by the United States. So I mentioned that as a matter of history to show that there's no question about my sense where we need to go. Now, in 1993, there was, of course, the recognition of the 100th anniversary of the overthrow of Liliuokalani. Many of you remember that, having participated at Ilani Palace. Hui Na'aua was at that time very much pushing forward to it. Many of us in this room had been members of Hui Na'aua. I include myself and Sylvia and many others. In fact, the earlier chairperson of the board was very active in Hui Na'aua as well. But anyway, we put together a program. I was in charge of the radio section in a program. What we said was, everything is as it was, and you are there, trying to explain to the people what had happened 100 years before that. In that same year, the state legislature passed a resolution, in essence, confessing to the fact that Hawaii had been illegally invaded back in 1893. In that same year, in December, the US Congress passed its confession, which they called Apology Resolution. 103-150, I think, is the number for that act. And then the state legislature said, we need to resolve this issue of Hawaiian sovereignty. How do we resolve it? Which is essentially the same question that is now before this board. And what they said was, we'll appoint a nine-member commission. It was called the Sovereignty Advisory Commission, to advise the state legislature on what to do with the issue of Hawaiian sovereignty. I was appointed a member of the commission, I think it was Rowena Akana, who was also, who was at that time, the Oha representative. And of course, there were other, seven others. We came out with a report, and that report said, in essence, that in 1893, there was an illegal incursion into the sovereign integrity of Hawaii, an invasion, and following the step-by-step process, we questioned the legitimacy of the state government at the present time. Submitted a report to the state legislature. Senator, who was chairman of the Hawaiian Affairs Committee, refused to accept the report. That how can, in essence, you're telling me we're all illegal and that we are disloyal American citizens, et cetera, et cetera. The same kind of mentality that many of you had been familiar with at that point in time. So they threw the report out. Then they said, what we need is another body. The legislature came in, governor changed. They said, we shall create the Hawaiian Sovereignty Advisory Commission to tell us how we are going to address this issue. At that time, they had 21 people appointed to this advisory commission, four automatically by the state legislature. Oha was one of those appointed, three others, three or four others, I cannot remember. And then they appointed the rest of us, who were elected by some native Hawaiian organization. So I was one of those who had been appointed at that time. At the time, John Wahai was governor. We responded to the state legislature when they asked the question, how shall we deal with the issue of Hawaiian sovereignty? By the following answer. We cannot tell you. Because we ourselves are merely appointed by the state legislature. It's not the voice of the people. We have no legitimacy to respond with such a report. What we want to do is go out into the communities and talk to members of the community and ask them what should be the process by which we address this very important issue. State legislature then came back and said, okay, go out, we authorize you to do that, and then file a report. We went to every native Hawaiian community that we could identify. There were very, these were very traumatic times. Some of our people, at least one I can recall, died during this meeting because of a heart attack. The issues were very hot and heavy. A lot of people accused us of being traitors, that we're disloyal, and the basis of it was that we were being supported by the state legislature. Who are even asking that question? The result of those meetings, however, was essentially ratified in the end. And the report was, the people were saying, one, we're sick and tired of others claiming to be our kings and queens and governors and aliinui and all that kind of stuff. And they were going from community to community, making these claims. They're going to the international community, making these claims, and we had not been invited to the party that they had, or the family reunion, or whatever the process was that they had used to decide that they were the heads of state of Hawaii. The second thing they said was that we don't want to proceed immediately because too many of our kupuna are passing away. It's been 100 years and more, and we cannot wait any longer. I had personally opposed that position, believing that we were not ready, the information was not sufficiently out there. I was on the losing side. So we decided, yes, we need to take the next step. And what they said was, let us elect our own delegates coming from our own communities. And let us pull the delegates together. If they come from an organization that makes a claim that they are the Hawaiian nation, let them run for office, let them be elected publicly. And so they suggested that this was a process, that we should get a convention of all the so-called Hawaiian leaders, or the self-proclaimed Hawaiian leaders, together in a room to propose what should be the next step in Hawaiian sovereignty. Before we even took that step, we said, let us hold another ratification on whether or not you like this process or not. So we had to be very meticulous, very careful on how we lay out this process. So we had what was called a Native Hawaiian vote to ratify this as a process. Should the Native Hawaiians elect delegates to propose a Native Hawaiian form of governance? The vote was overwhelming. Now, some of the questions was, well, who are the Native Hawaiians who are going to vote? Why only Native Hawaiians? How do you verify that they should be legitimately allowed to vote? One, why only Native Hawaiians? Because that was a mandate, and that was all that the state legislature was willing to fund. The Office of Hawaiian Affairs also jumped in and was willing to fund 50% of that process. But when it came to who are the Native Hawaiians, we say we release all boundaries. Any person who claims that they have a koko can participate, can register. We are going to list all the names out. So anyone else who wants to challenge that list, we will pull their name out, and after they vote, we will hold that ballot, and then we will make that determination. So what essentially we said was, rather than we deciding, or we playing a genealogical society, trying to address and having to show your birthright and all that kind of stuff, we said, no, generally, people are honest. And so we were going to allow it to happen that way, but we were willing to allow the challenge once it is published. And we had some people who made mistakes. And when it was called to the attention that they made mistakes, they admitted and they pulled their name out. One was a reporter who said, you know, the listing is infected with those who have registered illegally. And we said, well, who are they? Identify them so that we can pull their names out. And then what we did was, we checked the reporter. And it was that reporter who says, oh, yeah, I made a mistake, I didn't realize, and I sent it in, this application. We also had the application to register included in every telephone book. We made it as easy as possible. We also said, it's not for us to judge what your citizenship is. You claim to be an American citizen, yeah, you can come in and you can vote. You claim to be a Swede, you claim to be a citizen of any part of the world, we open it up totally so that you can participate and register. We said also that we are not going to judge whether or not your civil rights were taken away in a criminal act. Even if you're in jail, you can vote. No limitations. I went to Hala'ava jail and registered people to vote. So we said, any native Hawaiian, as long as you can claim that you are native Hawaiian, you can vote. People from the, what island was that? Sankian Island, the Solomon Islands, one of the Solomon Islands, which had been part of the territory of Hawaii at the time prior to the overthrow, also wanted to file and register to vote. We said, no, it's going, I went a bit too far, and that's going to bring up too much controversy. And then, of course, we're going to address the other question that trustee Apo had raised. What about the non-native Hawaiian citizens? And that we were simply stuck at because we were, to that extent, we were hamstrung. Okay. So we allowed everyone to vote overwhelmingly, where people say, yes, let's elect our own delegates. Let them have the meeting convention and then put out their product. And so what we did, we held the election of delegates to the Native Hawaiian Convention. I was elected from the Lu'alele district of Wai'ani. Many other areas were elected from these different districts. We had four from America who had been elected and had been very active in participating in our Native Hawaiian Convention. So we had, I think it was 89 delegates who were elected to serve in the Native Hawaiian Convention. We developed processes within the convention. If somebody died, or somebody moved out of your district, how are we going to substitute? We have developed all of these rules or procedures on how to refresh the members. We had divided into different committees. I chaired the International Relations Committee. We had other people chairing the Government Committee, the Territorial Committee, the People's Committee. So what I'm suggesting is that we were very, we took a lot of time in these discussions, a lot of the discussions that I just heard before this body. We had those discussions either in committee or within the General Assembly. We always were an open assembly, invited people to come, and we have been meeting in that way. Finally, we come to a position where we say, okay, let us start putting out ideas. What is a model that we want to suggest to the Hawaiian people? At the time that we were elected, we had people who were very, very patriotic to the United States of America. Pinky Thompson, member of our board, of our convention. Role hero, no question about his patriotism. And there's many others who were like that, retired military. On the other side were people as extreme as Bumpi Kanahili and many others. And Bumpi left already, and myself. So it wasn't a handpicked convention where you're only picking one side or the other side, but it was a true reflection of what the people had wanted as their representative. We met, we met, we met, we met, we met. Over a period of time, the general persuasion was the following. We need to be respectful of the feelings of both sides of this issue of integration or independence. And this is what we would do. Rather than us making the call and saying, whether you like it or not, here it is, we said that we are going to come out with two proposed models. One for an integration approach, very similar to the Aka'aka Bill, not necessarily the Aka'aka Bill, and I think it was before Aka'aka even started introducing that particular formula. And the other was complete independence. And different people started working on these various models. A straw vote was taken, I don't know if it was appropriate or not, but we took a straw vote, and the general persuasion at that time was that we supported independence. But we were committed to let the people have that choice of what they wanted. In the end, when we wanted to continue and finalize the convention, went to the state legislature, also came to Oha. The rug was pulled from out from under us. We were not funded any further. As a result, the organization that was supporting us, this 501(c)(3) that could act as a buffer to receive the funds and give us a support, went kaput. Today, Aha Hawaii does not exist. I have refused to adjourn the convention signed eye. It continues to operate. I appear here as a chairperson of the convention. Dante Carpenter, who had been elected, is a vice-chairperson. I have Glenn O'Amiller, who is also the second vice-chairperson. We have a system, and what we are attempting to do is to finish our commitment. Finish the process that we promised the people back in the whole, from the 90s up to the present time. That we will have the Hawaiian people elect their delegates, propose a convention, and at that time, let the Hawaiian people take their vote as to what they want. We are almost ready to come out with a final design. I can give you a website where you can see some of the discussions that we have and formulation for an independent nation. It's nhconvention.org, I believe it is, or .com. And later on, I can give it to you, if it's wrong, I can give it to you again. But what we are proposing is that we have an independent nation. What we are also proposing is that you have a nation with a nation approach. One of the things I think we have been foolish in doing is that we have been using the wrong conjunction in this whole discussion. And you can even see it on this board, and based on the people who have testified. It's the "or" conjunction. Do you want integration into the United States, or do you want independence from the United States? And based on that simple two-letter word, it has divided our community over the last 20 years and more. It has divided families. It has not only that, it has divided individuals. People who live on Hawaiian homestead, are on social security, and their grandchildren are getting scholarships because of what the Americans have provided. We want to protect Kamehameha schools, we want to protect the existence of the Office of Hawaiian Affairs. We are concerned about not losing those benefits, but we don't want to lose... We are concerned about not losing those benefits, but we don't want to lose our Hawaiian nation. And that is what we also need to address. Why the or? Why do we allow this kind of thinking to separate us? What happened to and? What happened to the inclusiveness, the Hawaiian approach? And so, as we go back, or my hope is, as we go back into convention and present it to the delegates of the convention, when we give the option for an and approach, I support both sides. I don't want to lose what we have now, but I am not going to give up my Hawaiian nationhood. And I would suggest that 90% of our people feel that way. That, to me, is a solution for uniting the Hawaiian people. I'm not saying 90% going to go for integration and independence, when we have 60% for integration, 70% for independence, but when we will have a united community saying that we have rights and we will continue to explore and you have no right cutting us off before that. So what is I ask that I come before you for? I ask that you allow us all to fulfill our commitments made, that allow the convention to complete its work. And then, after the convention complete its work, then we go to our transition process, which includes education. Just with the idea of switching from or to and is going to take some time for the mind to readjust, to reset, and start taking a look at this again. So we need some transitional period and we need essentially the vote to be taken. At this point, the native Hawaiians, and I would suggest of any particular political ilk, any place that they stand on this question of how you feel, following essentially the rules that we had followed previously, which means you need not have signed up for Kanai'alu Valu, you need not have signed up for any of the other processes. If later on, and I assume that both, your integrationist approach and your independence approach will pass, once you allow people not to split themselves but to support both sides, if you still want to hold fast to your listing, then you might consider eliminating only to the integrationist approach. The independence approach, people are going to say, hey, why should I have signed up in the first place? I'm a Hawaiian national, I'm not a US citizen, whatever the excuse is, that one you got to leave wide open. Now, I don't mean to overstate or abuse my time. Are there any questions at this point that I could assist?
Justi Hululunzi. If you want to pursue your commitment, who are your delegates today?
Our delegates are throughout the islands of Hawaii as well as off in America. I have a listing of our delegates, I need to refresh that listing. We just heard that Auntie Ruby had passed on. She was a...
McDonald.
Yes.
Kona.
Yes, she was a delegate to our organization. And so we need to clean up each of the places where they were elected from. What we have formed was this moku, and the moku will make the nominations, the general assembly will decide on whether or not we would accept or not accept. And generally, what we have said is let the moku decide and we will just ratify those people. Or we may decide not to fill those positions, but you still have an entity, and I'm saying we need to respect the integrity of that entity. We still do exist. And I'm in communication, I had notified them that I would be making this representation to the Office of Hawaiian Affairs.
And just for clarity, justis, Puka, Dante, and what's his name?
Glenn.
Glenn. I met with myself, Ke'ha'ava'abam, and Kavika, and they did share a wealth of documents regarding the Native Hawaiian Convention and the products of that. So we already have that in position and are reviewing that as part of our educational process.
Justia Paul.
You know, I recall, Puka, first of all, you know, I always admired your work. Ever heard you issue an angry word? That's been remarkable, considering the road that you've traveled. As I recall, one of the controversies of Haua'i was the low voter turnout. Can you address that in terms, I don't know if you have numbers or...
I don't have the numbers right in front of me, and we have made mistakes in getting the voter turnout. The biggest mistake was that we held elections on Super Bowl Sunday.
That's a bad mistake.
What we did was we had different places to vote in all of the normal election places that the state and the counties would have. I don't remember voter turnout, I think there was 73,000 votes that supported the creation of the convention. The low voter turnout was in terms of the different moku that we were elected. I'm from Lualulele, I forget, maybe I had 100 or 150 votes, but very small numbers. And the numbers are going to be small. Only when you have a national or statewide election, then you can pull in the people and it has to be, you know, if you tie it to a general primary election, then you can get more people coming down. But when it's only the native Hawaiians and it was a wrong timing, it was a low voter turnout. But what I have to say is that it was a public vote, it was open to everyone, and it was ratified as an appropriate, legitimately taken vote. We had this woman, what was the name of the argument?
Legal woman.
Who ratified it and verified it and the rest.
If you were, if the opportunity did present itself for you to resume the convention, I would expect that the same argument or challenge will be issued, and how would you respond to that in today's terms?
Low voter turnout? Yes and no. The turnout was X amount of number of voters. Whether it was low or not, it's not really for us to judge. What we will do is we will put the product out, let the people decide if they support it or don't support it. At that time is a moment of truth. And let me also say, well, no, I won't say it.
But how did you folks handle the apportionment issue?
The apportionment of, we went through the population of Hawaii as well as of America. And after we didn't apportion it accurately, we said that we would just allow, I think it was four or five votes or delegates from America. And from Hawaii, we tried to adjust the number of people at different areas and then we split it up into the traditional moku that elections were held at previously. In fact, your predecessor, I had been very much involved in setting up the vote. We had Ray Poa, who was also a member of that committee, and many others in the community who also supported that whole process of apportionment and the rest. And I must say that it's too many years ago for me to remember all of the details, so I can only talk...
I think for us on the neighbor islands, we've always felt that Oahu would dictate the amount of numbers that would represent our respective, outside of Oahu, because of their sheer numbers.
I think there's some support for that argument. The fact, however, is that Oahu has the majority in terms of numbers of people. What I had suggested was, why are we still limited by geography when our sense of community may be to a church, may be to an organization, may be to an idea, may be to a group, and that we should look beyond just a geographical? I may sleep and live and eat in Hua'i'a, but my association may be in Nanakuli or someplace else. So what I had proposed was a different methodology that is more up-to-date, more reflective of the consciousness of the Hawaiian people. I lost that argument and they said, no, you stick to geography.
Justi Hululunzi. You said you had 98 delegates?
I believe it was, well, 89 delegates.
89?
Yeah.
Well, you must have, well, there are 42 moku's, Chair, and if each moku had a representative, then the neighbor islands would have its fair share. And then it seems like you might have had, let's say, half from moku's and half another way, and I don't know how that it might be.
It was all based on geography. I'm not sure how we had split it. And I think it was based on geography as well as the estimated number of Hawaiians that we could attribute to that area. We also depended on the Oha list of those who had registered in trying to adjust how many from what place.
Chair, so I just want to be clear, Puka, you had mentioned earlier, you're asking for, the request for the, to reconvene the Native Hawaiian Convention, and for it to complete its work, and transition phase which includes education. I just want to, when will the vote come? Is it after or...
The vote would have to come after we produce our product. I believe there needs to be this education process. Just the idea of whether or not you should vote or or and is going to be a major change of mindset. And then to educate on what is this model of independence? And the questions that were asked here on this board, you asked the question, what about all the American benefits and what are you going to lose if you went towards independence? And so that kind of give and take, which is not an unusual or question that we had not addressed previously, but just that whole discussion is going to take quite a bit of time. I would suggest at least a year. But we cannot just let a year pass, we've got to be very actively engaged. Ask the question, ask the most embarrassing question or the question that you think is most threatening. How are we going to survive with national security? If Americans pull out and we became an independent nation? How are we going to finance ourselves? What new economic models are we going to fit into? Where are the resources? You know, is archipelagic theory of the law of the seas going to apply? Does all of that belong to us or do we have to give some to the United States? Or trustee Apol's question, how are you going to deal with, even the native Hawaiians who say, I want to remain part of the United States? Or those people, and when do you accept the idea that, oh, you don't need to be of the koko, but you can be Hawaiian? According to traditional Hawaiian law, five years, you're over here, you're ready to take an oath of allegiance, you can change. Should we only go back to you have to be born in the Hawaiian nation? If you follow that laws had been interfered with by the aggression of the United States, then why not allow that five years? Because we have had generation after generation after generation of Chinese, of Hawaiis, of Portuguese, and the rest. We're even hearing Hawaiis teaching our Hawaiian kids how to speak the Hawaiian language. Are we going to kick them out? You know, those are issues that we need to get out into the public and show that the approach that we are taking is humane, is appropriate, is respectful. The fears that people have, we have to be able to overcome by sharing with them. So they can say, oh, okay, I can go along with that, but right now I only going to support integration. Okay, that's fine, but later on, we're not cutting you out from being a member of the nation. I'm sorry, I tend to go right.
Justia Paul.
Yeah, you know, I tend to agree with your settlement. To me, you know, it has to get down to the human level, that whatever this model is, how am I going to pay for my kid's education? How am I going to pay for my mortgage? You know, and all of those questions of quality of life. You know, because in the long run, it doesn't matter what flag flies over you, it's about whether your Oha'ana, your family's been taken care of. And if the model in the pursuit of nationhood answers those questions, then we'll be all right. If it's simply, the dialogue simply stays in the heavenly rhetoric of nationhood and sovereignty, nothing's going to happen. Because people basically are not really that interested in that, I don't think, the masses.
Or in terms of priorities, they, of course, day to day, that's what they're looking at. And yet, they're still reminiscent, or they're still love, or they still have this sense of loyalty too? Especially when you write songs like the Hawaiian Sovereignty Song. You know, and those are the passions that come out of us from the past. We recognize, we need to put food on the table. But there are ways, we just haven't reasonably discussed these things. And what I'm saying is that allow this process to go through, let it finish, and allow the discussions to take its time. Many of us, I myself have been very anxious, very angry about how long it takes, but I recognize that this being a human process, it takes time. And our people always took time. You know, it took three days of meeting and council before they allowed the missionaries to come into Hawaii and establish, what is that, four missions? And then they asked for one more and took another three days. You know, and it engages in debate and very deep consideration. We need that time, our Hawaiian people need that time.
Okay, thank you, Puka.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Puka.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm going to call on Walter Madi because he had asked to address the board. Are you ready now, Walter? Andre, you had your hand up?
If there was time, I wanted to make a quick address to, if there's time. Five minutes, Ken.
Yeah. You down to two minutes now, next? Face that. Aloha, Andre.
Aloha. Aloha, my kaku. Aloha. I wanted to address the board and get real, I guess, what I'm feeling back on topic and maybe real precise with why I'm here and I think why a lot of us are here and perhaps even why you called us to be here. And that is talking about the process, the whole uluhu process, the Kanai'alu Valu nation building process. I want to reiterate that the timeline is very problematic and much too fast for anything logical or rational to be decided. Nine months is not enough time for anybody to even begin to, what was just shared and discussed here today, to be implemented. How do we educate our lahuu kanaka in nine months? And how do we address some of the problems and issues that are inherent to Kanai'alu Valu? So again, just reiterating, imploring you to strongly reconsider the timeline. And I just want to get into a little bit about some of the big problems and issues with Kanai'alu Valu that we have analyzed and seen. Of course, first and foremost, the big problem was that it came out of state legislation, yeah? Act 195 and Abercrombie's involvement has been very problematic for many Hawaiians, in particular, the independent Hawaiians, but many others as well. One of the key things that was problematic was Abercrombie appoints commissioners to represent the role. We didn't appoint those commissioners. I mean, we didn't have no involvement. And then, those commissioners began, through the process of building a role, began to step outside their kuleana of role building, and they began to politic and they began to lobby. And in particular, we know that Robin Danner was, you know, had met with the president for executive order. We know that Governor Wahee has been up to DC. So I'm not trying to point fingers, but I'm trying to pull out the things that have been problematic and why perhaps there's been such a really low turnout for the actual, the actual signups for Kanai'alu Valu. I don't know what it's been, 30,000, but, you know, whatever, 20, 30,000, it's been pretty dismal, I think we can all agree to that. And the cost has been phenomenal in comparison. But so we have the problem with Abercrombie appointing the leadership that builds the role, not the lahuu, not those affected, and that's really diametrically opposed to any notion of self-determination, you know? We left out from the very beginning. out from the very beginning. We have commissioners who have political agendas. They're going up to DC, and they're supposed to be building a role. So where's the accountability and responsibility to those commissioners? A, whoever it is, Robin Danner, Governor Wahea, you have no business politicking in DC as a role commissioner. It creates, it's a serious conflict of interest in our mind. Then we have, the issue for me, what I notice, is when we don't, are not part of the process of choosing who are the commissioners that represent this role building, I began to notice that some of our commissioners don't really understand the issue. As Henry pointed out, and I think Dennis, you know, what is sovereignty? What does that mean? How do we understand sovereignty? I was on Maui, and I heard one Kanai Olavu commissioner talking about occupation and then inherent sovereignty. And when you understand the implications of occupation and inherent sovereignty, if you understand that, you realize that those two terms are diametrically opposed to one another. Occupation is Kianusai language. The outcome is deoccupation, restoration of an independent nation-state. When you talk about inherent sovereignty, you're talking within the US framework language, Indian law language. So it makes me wonder now, do we even have commissioners who really understand the legal implications of nation-building? And so my point is that I really believe the Lahu is always, in order for it to be porno and successful, we have to have inclusion from the very, very beginning. And I bring that, and I also want to reference the ad hoc committee that designed this nation building process. I believe, I'm asserting that there should have been community Lahu members involved in that ad hoc committee to help design the nation-building process. So that the community, those affected, are vested from the very beginning. I also want to reference the, if you look at this agenda right here, we have five groups here. You know, I'm a member of Mana as well, women for aloha, Nuka'aina. We have Henry, Bumpy, Dennis, and Puka. This to me is evidence right here, that we only get five people, we're talking to Oha right now, five representatives talking about issues and concerns with this nation-building process. This should be an ongoing process, maybe for years, so we target as much opportunity for the Lahu to have this same opportunity. Not just us five, but maybe fifty thousand, or however many we can fit within a timeframe. You guys understand what I'm saying? This has to, this cannot just be limited to this for us to be able to voice our concern to you, the decision-makers. But this should really be an ongoing process that reaches out to as much of the Lahu as possible. So what I'm saying is, this is a microcosm of what should be happening big time. You know, there should be consultation, there should be a process for input and concerns and feedback, so that the Lahu, again, those who are going to be affected by the outcomes of this process, have had every step of the way, opportunities to voice concern, to voice issues, to help dream and design what our nation going to look like, you know. So in closing, I want to say that, you know, I think the one thing that we all agree on, that we all are striving for, is the unity of our people, the unity of our Lahu Kanaka. I don't think there's anybody here who doesn't want unity. And I will assert that Kanai Olavu is not going to give us, is not giving us that unity by its very nature of sign up or get left behind. That was the message, that was what was published in Kaua'ola, and very powerful language, that you risk not being recognized as a native Hawaiian if you don't sign up. How can we, how can we dare approach our own people and tell them you will not be recognized as a native Hawaiian? You know, so it's very divisive and not inclusive in the way that it's been set up to get on board or get left behind, no can, to me, you know. So those are my comments at Kamaua'ala will be here, and I'm sure we'll have more discussion about this. But mahalo for the opportunity.
Mahalo.
Thank you, Andre.
He took up five minutes of my time, but I agree with everything he said, to say those things, so that's great. I flew in from Molokai today because I really believe in the call for unity, and I'm hoping to zoom our grassroots perspective. You know, I don't have all of the technical kinds of stuff that I learned about today. And I really want to, before I even move on any further, you know, congratulate the people who did talk, you know, Henry and your gang. It gives us a feeling that somebody knows something, you know? And that's really, that's really important. Hello, ladies. You know, that's really important. This is not a fly-by-night kind of a deal going here. And people walk around the rooms with, carrying their Law of Nations, dragging them around the room with the Law of Nations. I mean, that's reassuring that, like I said, we're going to start off, we're not going to be a false start. So that, that's really reassuring. What makes me nervous is what Andre was talking about, is that we need to hold mana'ali. There's something I learned from my kupula, took me years and years to understand what he was talking about. And, but it worked. So in this case, you know, the timetable that Oha has presented on the table is really, it's not going to work. It's not going to work. Just listen to the complexities we heard today. How are we going to put that together? How are we going to even put the independence complexities together in this short period of time? So, and this is just part of the group. You know, what I don't see on this table is our E trust. We can't go against the United States of America without the full team. You know, those trusts, besides Oha's funding and stuff, belongs to us, the Hawaiians. And if we're going to go anywhere, we need everybody on this team. So we need time to get those guys on board. They need to be brought on board, whether they're coming willingly or being dragged to this table. They need to be here. This is important. If we're calling for unity and they don't come, why the hell should the people come? So they need to set the example. And they did set the example on Molokai. And they said that we cannot put all of our resources in one place on Hawaiian homelands. Who was a Kikunman who said, yes, we can. And that was the prime example that gave all of us hope, that if that was continued over the years, we'd have been together, all of them, E trust, Oha Hawaiian homes, you name it, they would have all been together. So that example needs to be brought out again, that we can and should come together in this call for unity. So they should be on the table. And that's going to take time. The other thing that's going to, the most important thing that's going to take time is we cannot allow a low voter count and participation. If we're going to do this thing, we cannot allow that to happen. And it's going to happen if we don't spend the time and the money to bring our people along. That's been the problem. It's been the problem with all of our stuff. Oha is not strong when they go to the negotiating table because they do not have their people with them. That's why we got to settle for things that we shouldn't have settled for, because we didn't have our people. And that's why Henry's having a hard time, because his voter count is low. That's why Hayden is having a hard time, because his count's low. We need to go out there and get our people. I have been in a community organizing most of my life, and it started off where meetings used to be jammed with Hawaiians. Today, when we have meetings, I'm telling you this to God's truth, when we have been Mr. on Molokai, the majority of the people at the meetings are non-Hawaians. They're non-Hawaians. Hawaiians are not participating in group activities. And I don't know what the reason is, we can all guess what the reasons, but it's the fact. So we need to spend time, money, and energy to bring our people along in this call for I want to leave just with two examples. One is Kaholabe. There are really, really good lessons in that effort that we can learn from. And if you boil everything down, it goes back to aloha'aina, and people, and aloha'aina. It wasn't the politicians who saved Kaholabe. I mean, we had the best of the best trying to take that island away from the military, and they couldn't, they couldn't do it. It was aloha'aina, it was the love of the land, and that should be the basis of our call for unity. Yeah, it's the government, but the same thing is happening to all of our islands as it's happening to, what happened to Kaholabe. It was just easier to understand the destruction. But it's happening to the rest of our islands. And if we continue with this leadership that's coming from America, we are going to lose our islands. Garriels, barbarians. I mean, we got Hawaiians in leadership positions at DLNR, even where they own sacred mountains, destroying the protections for EV. And it's not because he's a bad guy, but it's because of the system that he works under. So we, that's what we've been here today, is like, yeah, we need our own government back in order to save the rest of our islands. That's what's at stake here. The leadership, the value system is screwed. And I can say that because I'm involved every day of my life in this political system. So I want to support this thing. I think on the eleventh and the twelfth, there's a person in this room that are talking about independence or deoccupation and those kind of things, we should be able to come into this room by ourselves, minimum one hour, to talk about ourselves about how much time are we going to need? Make the recommendations to Oha. How many different ways are we going to allow people to sign up for this movement? Make those recommendations to Oha. Talk about ourselves so we can start coming together as a group. That's going to be really important. We're going to need that time. And not, if Oha is neutral, then Oha should allow us to speak by ourselves and come up with ideas to be presented to Oha, and not by some agenda that Oha is being set. We wouldn't waste the time, we could follow Oha's agenda, but we should have time by ourselves to do that. So those are my recommendations that I wanted to bring up today.
Question, trustee, Paul?
Yeah, I do think that the timeline is going to be an issue, is an issue. Walter, I think, I think, you know, after all these years, there's this huge expectation when we talk about a governance ahah, that this is going to be a magic bullet of some sort with all its problems. And then when you look at the nine-month timeline, I really don't expect, I expect that there's going to have to be more than one governance ahah, that the first one is probably going to be limited to just trying to create a framework for what the next steps ought to be, so that discussions like this are Oha-free. That discussions like this occur in a, in a non-political environment in terms of allegiance to anyone. And that that body, you folks, would be expanded and created by a base of the electorate. And then you guys, Oha-free, state-free, federal-free, you guys, girls, because we're not going with the No Wahini model, you folks would then set the next steps.
Did you make that conclusion on your own?
I said, we will not go with the No Wahini model. It'll be Wahini-inclusive.
Who knows better?
Because what, the frustration I feel is, is I want to get out of the way, you know? And it's hard for us to get out of the way when we keep calling people to this table. This ought to be the people's table. How do we do that? To start from scratch and then let this, but I also believe it has to rise up from an electorate by, so that just because you have an organization and et cetera, that you got a seat at the table, you know, you earn it by being part of it. And then that body will then decide what the next steps could be, whatever that mean. So that from the get-go, as we've heard by several speakers, it's contamination-free from day one. And whatever Oha is doing on federic, whatever, that has no bearing or holds no commitment to the, to this subsequent body that is moving toward true independence of the state, or at least, you know, one of the notions. I don't know. What do you think about that?
It's, I half agree. You know, to me, what's going to happen when all of us get together and start coming together, the process is going to be just as important as the end result. The process is what's going to bring people together, not the end result. It's going to, let's go get this, and then we're going to do all other stuff. I think the process is going to be a painstaking, God-wishing process, if it's going to be true and honest, and if we're going to learn from each other and come up. So that's why I'm saying home and I'm ready, and I'm glad we had this table. You know, when we created Oha, we thought, I'm on the senator, you know, going, brown power, brown power, brown power.
What we do is, Oha, as long as we're at the table, there's no trust.
I'm agreeing with you. The trust out there.
So important, it needs to occur away from us.
You started something.
But it needs to be empowered to do it, you know, with money.
You know, you started something, people are in this room, you started something good. I didn't think this was ever going to happen. You started something good, there's a lot of mistrust, that's another reason we need to be alone in our rooms together, talk together, give us, you know, make our own agendas. And sure, sure to change. We heard there was a change. Now we need to see it. But don't change horses now, you got something good going right now. I mean, people are in the room. Don't change now. Allow the thing to go easy, easy, and the leadership's going to come out of this.
Trustee standing there.
I think one of the things you mentioned, the, this issue of Kanai Olavu and the cutoff. Whenever I listen to those ads, I get a little disappointed, because we're saying to Oha and people, if you don't sign up, you're gone, you're extinct. And that's not good. So that's something we can do now, can we? We can ask them, whoever's running those ads, to change it. All I have to say, announce that the role is open, period. Don't have to put a cutoff date, and we couldn't, don't even have to say it's Kanai Olavu that's doing it. It's just, we have the role is open, they sign up, period, and let it go. So we kind of, because what the point you make is real. I mean, people tell me, what about me? If I don't, if I miss a date for something, I'm gone?
But I heard a lot of groups around here said that process is flawed. So why should we even go back to that process?
Okay, good. I think, you know, this is a really good move today. Today was a really good start. And I agree with Andre, you know, more meetings like this should be happening, because you're getting really good information. I'm blowing my mind at.
Let me ask you this question, because a lot of times, as Peter says, we always get the hits.
Right.
You know, Act 195 was actually something that came out of the legislators, and the Hawaiian senators had a big role in how it moved out of the, that house or that senate area. But they have their own sense of what they feel is important, because they are the elected political decision-makers.
Right.
But they didn't have the money commitments. I've been, I'm the one that had to come up with the commitment from Oha. I pulled the trustees, and we had an agreement to go ahead and fund the initial aspects of Act 195. But you've worked with legislators, you know, especially our Hawaiian elected legislators. Are you telling them the same issues too, that you, that you, that you, that you've been addressing with the trustees here?
Yeah, they don't have a table, they don't have a table you can go to.
Can I lead them out of the loop too?
You got to stand on the rails and have them, they don't want to talk to you. So, you know, to me, the waters, maybe they had good intentions, whatever the intentions was, I don't understand the intentions of what they tried to do. All I know is that our people deserve more than half a loaf of bread.
I agree.
The offer coming out of the state is, you know, let's go be a nation within a nation. But our Queen left us a nation. We deserve what. We deserve what she left us. Why and how are we going to organize our people to wake up and come when we're offering them half a loaf of bread? We've got to be offering them the full loaf of bread before they're going to come. You are the nation. It's alive, it's well. People are here. They have the rules, they've studied it. We've got professors, I don't know where he is, someplace around the world, making speeches about this whole thing. They're out there. So we deserve what the queen left us. That should be the goal, to wake the people up again to join and unify, not half a loaf of bread. But that's just my manao.
You never answered my question.
I know, I know.
The elected officials that caused all of this to move, so there is an impetus to move quick and fast. You know, my only fear is the vice v. Kaitano and the possible more attacks coming against the entitlements that we have. That's just maybe my personal thing. But yet you have these elected officials that are Hawaiian ancestry equally, and they have the same desires and the same kind of manao that came from grassroots up. And they want to do something significant.
Collette, you go to the legislature, I go to the legislature. Hawaiians are treated like shit at the legislature. When they see us coming, they go, oh no, here comes the Hawaiians again, now what they want. You know, they should be satisfied with Oha, they should be satisfied with what Hawaiian home, they get coming in a school.
And I forgive you too for coming against us with the Kaka Akku bill.
We all make mistakes.
You should shut yourself, you know, and we have to do the same thing too.
We have enough development already. We don't need to develop anymore.
But that's what I'm saying. Either way we go, we have to include everybody too.
So I want to go back to those Hawaiians at the legislature. They have a reality where they've got to live in every day, and they don't have the people backing them up, so they've got to go make deals all the time. If we had our people, that's why I'm saying, we have to spend money, time, and educate our people, and bring our people, wake them up, and bring them as our base, the whole reality changes. Everything changes when you have your people.
No, I agree with you. I wish we can have that. I don't have a magic wand, but...
It takes hard work. You know that, Collette. You've still got so hard out there.
Leon?
Kamanao should adjust Ali'i Trust's question.
Yeah, wait, Leon, see you? Sure. Okay. Are you done, sir?
I'm done, Collette. Thank you.
Okay, wait, maybe you should adjust that. The word is conservative, they're like, protect their own okoles. I'm tired of on my knees and begging to like Kamanao. And I don't say this in a mean fashion, but they have certain assets that they have to be careful about, and how they have to be very protective because of their situation. And I think they have good hearts and they care about what happens about the Lahu'i.
This is a call for unity. It's a call to all Hawaiians. All Hawaiians.
Kamanao, go ahead.
Yeah, just to clarify, so for, before we even started our press releases of, we had started already contacting all of the Ali'i Trusts. And we had met with them, myself, Chairman Sharo, Justice Appol, Yona, Judge Klein, to explain what we were moving forward with and to elicit their support. We also met, so that was every single Ali'i Trust. And we met with their board, usually it was their board president or designee, as well as the executive, whether that's the CEO or the administrator. We had met with them, we presented, we were able to ask, well, they were able to ask questions and provide feedback. Only one of the trusts came out to support fully, that is, the Lumalilo Trust. I have not heard back from two others. One had declined. And it's true, what Chairman Sharo is saying is, you know, they relying on the law and their own policies of how it's necessary for them in order to fulfill their fiduciary duty to their trust or protect the assets that they could not come out and support from a political perspective. We also met with the Royal Societies, Queen Kahului Manu Society, Haleo Na Ali'i, Royal Order. They are asking for follow-up meetings to talk to their entire organization statewide. So when we go on, this summer, when we go on to the neighbor islands, we will be scheduling meetings on each island with those Royal Societies. They felt that they needed more information and time because of their protocols and tradition of decision-making. They need time as well. So we did reach out. It's unfortunate that, you know, they don't see the need, but I agree that a call for unity would be that core kumuhana, that core focus, you know, for us. I think it'll take time even to educate themselves, you know.
It's not a call for unity for politics. It's a call for unity for social justice, education. We need all of those elements in order to wake up our people and to move our people. So we need all of the resources. They can fit in. Those things you just mentioned, the same things Kukumanu was telling us, why they couldn't do the, you know, the... I mean, I'm all about the same exact reasons.
It is disappointing, you know, if you notice, the more money they have, the less they want to get involved. And so us poor folks have to struggle for ourselves, it seems. It's very disappointing. I mean, you know, who's running the country? I mean, it's a very, it's not the first time we've been turned down by them.
Call them to the table.
They come, this animal, nice thing's going to go away.
No.
That's what happens.
If they don't show up, then the people who know they don't want to show up.
Yeah, unfortunately, there's not much you can do about it.
Those guys cannot hide.
Kay?
Thank you, Collette.
Mahalo.
Oh, thank you so much for holding this. This has been an incredible day spent. I've learned a lot, and I've also just really respect Oha, the trustees, for holding this conversation, because it's long overdue. But it's also, I believe that it has restored my trust in the fact that we are all looking out for the best interests of our people and our nation, so mahalo nui. And mahalo turo, as it presented, this has really has been a very, very excellent presentation. I wanted to bring a slightly different perspective into play, and this is the international scene, what's going on. I spent quite a bit of time traveling to the United Nations, maybe four times a year to Geneva and about the same amount to New York, to talk about our situation. And of course, as Paul Carr mentioned, he was there since the 80s. And there have been many other people. Bumpi was there. Millilani Trask continues to represent Hawaii's interests there at the United Nations. And Kauai Puna Preji, for those of you who remember him. He was instrumental in getting Hawaii a foothold in Geneva in particular, just because of his own presentation, his representation of who we are. It just impressed a lot of you. People still talk about him now, 30 years later, about how he impacted them. So I just wanted to say that there is a lot of interest on the international level about Hawaii, and many people do understand what our situation is. And I wanted to also talk a little bit about the UN processes. There's a lot of people who want to kokua Hawaii there. But we, the United Nations, as well as the World Courts and all, they have their own procedures to go through. So in order to access them, we have to go through quite a few steps to get to that point. And I just want to report that we, the Hawaiian Kingdom, has actually attained a level of recognition that we are, Kianusai has actually filed in three of the World Courts, cases, two which are still pending, which one which was decided back in 2000. And also he's acceded to several of the international conventions. One of them is the Geneva Convention and the Hague Convention. And anyway, so these types of mechanisms that are international mechanisms are only available to states that are actually sovereign states. So in other words, there is a de facto type of recognition that Hawaii, the Hawaiian Kingdom is already a sovereign state and can access these international bodies. So I prepared here a list of some of the actions that are going on at an international level, both in the legal area of reports, as well as in the diplomatic area where I'm working mostly. And diplomatic means you just go and ho'umali'ma, you talk story with the other countries, and you tell them your story, and then you find out about their story and see how we relate. And then you also find out about what other people have done. And I think one of the things that we have to lift our perspective to is to see that we're not the only ones that have been in this situation. When the United Nations started out, there were 51 countries that founded the United Nations. There are now 193 countries. Almost three-fourths of the countries in the United Nations have come through a procedure of some sort, some similar to ours and some more difficult than ours, many of them more difficult than ours. Hawaii stands in a very unique place in this whole area of what is called, generally called decolonization. And our position is unique, because we actually were a sovereign, recognized nation, and we still are. And that makes us very unique from all the other countries that came to the United Nations to seek entry into the United Nations. One of the procedures that is being used is called the decolonization process that the United Nations has. It has a committee called the Decolonization Committee. And many of the states that have now become sovereign nations, or sovereign states in the United Nations, came through this process. And they came through all kinds of different ways of gaining their independence, many of them through violence, through war. And then many of them, actually even after they gained their independence, went into civil war amongst themselves, the different factions. I don't expect that to happen with us, because we're sitting at a table, we're talking very reasonably, and we're talking about, no, and we're talking about what really is the essence of who we are, which is we are a people of aloha. And that, I believe, is what's going to differentiate our... It has made it a longer process for us, because we're refusing to take up arms or to get into a state where we have to force the world to do something, you know? But nevertheless, the Hawaiian Kingdom is actually working and getting, progressing quite rapidly in the area of diplomacy and the area of international law. The appeal for time is really quite a reasonable thing. We really need the time to work this out. The Decolonization Committee actually is a committee at the UN that actually provides the time for a nation or a developing nation to think about their issues and to decide, to get to the point where they can actually make a decision. Take Luca La Donia, for instance. It was actually restored to the list of non-self-governing territories, which meant it came under the Decolonization Committee in 1986. It has been having this discussion about whether or not they want independence. Now, they started at a point where most people didn't really want independence. There were a few people who were pushing for it. But now they've had a long time to discuss it. They've had 28 years where they've been in this discussion. This year, they're going to be having a vote to decide whether or not they want to pursue either independence or remain a part of the France. But it's not a binding vote. Basically, it's just a kind of a referendum to see where we want to go, where we want to go. And then about four years from now, in 2018, they will actually have a vote on whatever they decide this time. So they're taking time to do it, and this is what is really necessary in our part. I don't think it's going to take us that long, but it really is critical that we take the time to have this discussion with independence as fully being explained as fully and as fully explored as we have been doing with the nation within the nation and other types of models. So I just really want to thank Andre for his appeal, for more time, as well as for Walter, because this is really what's needed. We need to educate our people. We need our people to understand and to get over many of the fears or the preconceptions or the anxieties that may arise, so that we can discuss this out and we can show that actually the Hawaiian Kingdom was not only a sovereign nation, it was a thriving sovereign nation at the time, and that we can still do this. We are actually in a better position now than we ever have been. We have people around, the entire world has been practically decolonized. So now we have all these independent nations who actually do associate or at least sympathize with our situation, in that they had come through a process and that they had been successful. We have a lot of partners around the world that understand us, in other words. And so we have to be looking at this thing from the standpoint of what are, not only our options locally and what we need to do locally, but what kind of support we can get from the international community. And I'm here to say that if we work this through properly, common sense with aloha, we will have tremendous support on an international level. It wouldn't be any problem as far as getting other nations to recognize us and to restore their relationships with us. So that's my manao.
Thank you, Leon. Any comments, Justice? Thank you. I think that's, anyone else? I think that would end the meeting for today. We really appreciate you all coming. I think for me, at least, it was very educational. I think the work that's been done by all of you has been so well done. I must say, I'm very impressed by the work. And it was a great educational session for us as trustees. But as Leon and Walter says, I mean, this has to be a process by the group, and the trustees would be involved only to know what you're doing and what's going on and getting educated in the process. So with that, the meeting has come to a close, and see you in a week.
In a week, yeah. And just for reminders for the trustees, continuation of Kamaua 4 is this week, Friday, Saturday. So that's what I believe Walter was referring to, that the request for the independent groups to meet and then propose some recommendations, and then we will bring that back before the board for consideration.
Good. Thank you. With that...